How we don't bring waste.
We can't, so they have the extra electricity.
Today is Thursday, April third, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-five. It is seven. We'll talk this town council meeting to order. First item on the agenda is public allegiance. Kathy Burke, will you lead us?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The whole call starts with my love, Doug Smith.
Here.
Dean Renfro.
Here.
Kathy Burke.
Here.
Greg DeHolsky.
Here.
Jeff Beechey is here. To my right, and Town Manager Mike Yoder.
Here.
The Treasurer Kathy Antonelli.
Here.
In the back, Fire Chief Nick Hans.
Good evening.
Legal Counsel Alex Bollman.
Here.
And Town Marshal Steve Pring.
Here.
Everybody had a chance to review the agenda.
Yes.
Yes.
Any changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay, if not, the agenda will stand as published. Next item, approval of the invoices. You had a chance to review the invoices?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion, we approve the invoices.
Yeah, a motion by Dean.
I'll second.
Second by Doug, open for discussion. No further discussion, take a vote. Doug Smith.
Yes.
Dean Renfro.
Yes.
Kathy Burke.
Yes.
Greg DeHolsky.
Yes.
And Jeff Beechey says yes, motion carries. Hey, get ready to reports. Mike, you're up.
All right, first up, we have the Bristol Fire Department contract for services for two thousand twenty-five. It's, it's almost time to send Nick a check, so we do have his contract, but we. But you guys haven't approved it or taken any action on it, boy, stuck it in your folder, in your packet, rather, and it's on the agenda for you to discuss. Decide what's your pleasure.
Well, we did actually approve it for legal counsel back in December.
We authorized, we authorized an amount subject to approval of the agreement.
Mm-hmm.
So from a appropriation standpoint, that was what, that was the action that had been approved.
Okay.
Okay. So the contract this year. Bottom. Legal counsel Alex Bollman.
Here.
And Town Marshal Steve Pring.
Here.
Everybody had a chance to review the agenda.
Yes.
Yes.
Any changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay, if not, the agenda will stand as published. Next item, approval of the invoices. You had a chance to review the invoices?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion, we approve the invoices.
Yeah, a motion by Dean.
I'll second.
Second by Doug, open for discussion. No further discussion, take a vote. Doug Smith.
Yes.
Dean Renfro.
Yes.
Kathy Burke.
Yes.
Greg DeHolsky.
Yes.
And Jeff Beechey says yes, motion carries. Okay, get ready to reports. Mike, you're up.
All right, first up, we have the Bristol Fire Department contract for services for two thousand twenty-five. It's, it's almost time to send Nick a check, so we do have his contract, but we. But you guys haven't approved it or taken any action on it, boy, stuck it in your folder, in your packet, rather, and it's on the agenda for you to discuss. Decide what's your pleasure.
Well, we did actually approve it for legal counsel back in December.
We authorized, we authorized an amount subject to approval of the agreement.
Mm-hmm.
So from a appropriation standpoint, that was what, that was the action that had been approved.
Okay.
Okay. So the contract this year. Hurry. Bottom.
I'm trying for it.
On the other side. Right there in the service contracts. Right, right there. So you've got a history.
Oh, nine hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and fourteen thousand, okay. So we've got nine hundred and twenty, township has a million eighty thousand. Okay.
Um. Oh, I see it now.
Next question for you, does, does the township sign the contract with you guys? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and they, they accepted the million eighty thousand?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Did they change it?
What do they?
Uh, I would have to look at the contract and settle on, um, I could carry it right offhand.
Okay. Okay, was it substantially less than that?
Did they change?
It is less.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what was their rationale?
Don't have it in the budget.
Oh, okay.
About there, yeah.
Really?
All right.
Their, their published budget was the same amount as they paid last year, right? Six hundred and seventy thousand.
Okay.
Really?
Well, but I don't know what Mike's plans were, he may have other monies.
Yeah, I tried, I reached out to Mike this week, but he wasn't, he's gone, so. He couldn't, I was gonna ask him. Yeah, yeah, okay.
What's the difference between last year and this year? On all of them? Difference?
No, if you look at the category, a lot of it was.
Like here, they, last year.
Yeah, so last year they were at five seventy?
Yeah.
And this year it's nothing. They were five seventy.
Last year we were six fifty-four.
Five. York, I can understand, they're, they're approach, or township.
Well, maybe the reason for the increases where it's at is up for the writing, it's employee pay.
Oh, I see, okay, thank you.
Um, it breaks it down, but that's.
I didn't look that far up, I guess, I'm sorry.
What's that?
Uh, he was saying the difference between, um, the amounts is a lot, it has to do with employee pay and stuff like that.
Okay.
I'm still wondering, can I ask?
Yeah, yeah.
What do you have off the top of your head, and I, I don't, you know, just an approximate? How many calls are done in the township versus how many calls are done in Bristol City Limits?
Uh, monthly or?
That's, if, whatever you have, if you have a yearly, monthly, whatever, I'm just curious, because.
Obviously fluctuations.
Yeah.
Because as, as the town grows, their annexes in the township is gonna change too.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, right now, anywhere from, uh, fifty call, we, we run a hundred calls in, a month, I would say fifty calls goes in the township. And then I would say forty, thirty-five, forty in, uh, in.
In Bristol.
Yeah, last month it was forty-nine, thirty-one.
Yeah, forty-nine, thirty-one, so we're close to, yeah.
It's like eighty percent.
And that's, that's as long, as, as long as, uh.
Forty-five percent.
The input gets put in correctly, right? We do have, like, Bravo is now part of town, and I've caught folks.
Yeah.
Still making that the township. Yeah. And you can, but it's only, the output's only as good as the input.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so we would have to take this out of the TIF that we use, correct? Do we have that much in that TIF?
Budgeted.
We, we budgeted, we budgeted for nine hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Yes.
Um.
It's in.
Okay, as long as we can afford it, yeah.
So we've got it in our budget. I, I guess I don't have a problem with the amount, but I would like to, so Nick, I'll just ask you. If the township's not gonna agree to their million eighty thousand, how do you guys get around that? What do you, how do you, how do you overcome that shortfall?
My question too.
Uh, use the Q fire fund, uh, or if we need equipment or whatnot.
Okay.
Is what we'll end up doing.
But you're, but this. Two million dollar budget for the year, or whatever we've got, two, two point two, that's your operating expense, right? Well, it's not operating expense and equipment, or just operating expense?
That's just operating.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, because all the equipment that we have is, like, fire trucks and the ambulances and stuff, they're going by the township for the most part.
Yeah.
Now, what that budget is, is supplies and.
Yeah. So.
Payroll and all that.
Yeah.
Right, right. So you can use the Q fund for that, or?
We can use the Q fund, what we would do is pay for, by EMS supplies and, and maintenance and stuff, and, and take that and use Q fund to buy new equipment. And whatever we need, I would say there's my item in there for equipment, uh, additional equipment, like I've got, uh, I think I've got fifteen sets of fire gear that expire in June. Well, that's about seventy thousand dollars right there, so.
Yeah.
So I have to replace that somehow, can't let people run around with expired gear, so.
Right, no, I, I agree, I agree.
So that's, that's how that works.
Yeah, I just.
I know.
I don't want you guys to fall short, right? But I also, I also want this to be equitable between the taxpayers of the town and the taxpayers from the township.
I agree.
And.
I told Nick the other night, I said, to me, it ought to be fifty-fifty at the, at the least.
We used to do fifty-fifty years ago.
It used to be sixty-fourty.
Well, we used to do a third, a third, a third, until we got into how many calls and populations and.
Yeah.
All of that. It should be fifty-fifty, if we, if we, say we go up to nine hundred thousand and the township bought that nine hundred thousand.
Yeah, but what about York? York's part of it too.
Well, that, they can, they won't come up with their, third, I guarantee you that.
Well, I'm not saying a third, a third, a third, I'm saying based on, you know, number of calls.
Metal Berry does their magic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's true.
Yeah.
Didn't grow this year.
Yeah.
Take it all.
So, and. Yeah. I just don't like the fact that you guys are getting shorted.
Well, the other part too, the township, they're just passing your ambulance in January or in December, so that's sitting there too, and that's turning on the two hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. For it too, so, I mean, I know that, that's.
Yeah, well, and I, yeah, and I, I, I appreciate them doing that, but we also bought an eight hundred thousand dollar fire truck too.
Yeah.
That our taxpayers are paying for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Land for those a few years ago, but, yeah.
Yeah.
So was, on your, uh, the breakdown, so you have the ambulances, that's, so in the two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five, you split the bud, like you split it? Showed one twenty-four for an ambulance and two thousand twenty-four, one fifty-seven for twenty-five, is that what that is? Just the one ambulance?
You have to scroll, scroll back.
Uh, it's all the way at the top.
All the way at the top.
All right, uh, down, right, um.
No, that's for, that's.
Those that calls?
That's, that's ambulance bill.
Okay.
So we bill our, bill insurance companies and stuff like that.
Okay, that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
What's the cost of ambulance call nowadays?
Well, it depends, um, it, it really depends.
Does it depend on distance, or does it?
Depends on care.
Okay.
ALS, BLS.
Oh, I see.
How many transportation you do.
Yeah, okay, okay, gotcha.
So.
I can't remember how many thousand mine.
The ambulance is owned by the township, right?
It was quite a bit.
Yes, and township owns the ambulances, correct?
Paying for.
All of them, yeah.
Do they own them?
And so then do we own the fire trucks?
Yeah.
No.
No. We own.
One plus one.
One fire truck.
So the latter, the one that, the new one?
Yeah.
The latter one, the new one will be retained by the town?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I mean, yeah, it's like that's even, if, if, if fire department doesn't have the trucks, it's not even an aspect of the budget.
No.
Right.
Like, there's no bearing.
Well, the.
I mean, I understand they're paying for it, but.
Yeah. The maintenance comes out of your operating fund.
Which will be part of the budget, which I understand that, but, so I mean, regardless of them buying an ambulance, that's.
Yeah.
Completely aside from the budget.
Right, right. Okay, I just. We need to figure out something so that, moving forward. I mean, right now, we've got the, we've got the funds in our TIF accounts to pay for this, but that's not gonna last long. No. It's gonna get depleted.
Well, I guess we'll have to do another fire territory thing. Everybody took a deep breath there, didn't they?
You gonna leave that charge, Kathy?
I certainly will.
Okay. So, all right, um. Thoughts?
So I, I don't know what to do, uh, if you want to talk to Mike Lee first, we could bring this back for your signature. In two weeks.
Two weeks would be fine with me.
How's that pushing time for getting a fire department paid? When's the?
Does that impact you guys at all, Nick, if we push this out two weeks?
You may.
Oh, we would push it out this far.
Two, we may.
We're gonna pay it till July anyway.
Yeah, we don't pay it for July, yeah.
Okay.
It's not gonna hurt anything. I just figured it out, our, our part of the total amount is forty-one percent.
Only.
Which goes along with your forty, fifty.
Right.
You know, ten.
Only if they're paying the full.
Million.
Only if they're paying our full million eighty.
I'm just saying, saying what we would, with, well, that's true. Okay, you got me there. I based it on the twenty-two hundred, two million two, so.
So I still wanna find out where this Washington Township Fire Department, hey, that's going. That's on their, that's on their financial report from this year, from two thousand twenty-four. But I have no idea where that money is going.
Where it's going or coming from.
Where it's going, because on their, on their two thousand twenty-four financial report.
Mm-hmm.
They showed money is being paid to Bristol Fire and EMS and Washington Township Fire and EMS.
Well, that doesn't make any sense, they don't have a Washington Township Fire.
Uh, I know.
There's no such thing.
So.
That's interesting.
Danny, and Nick, if you guys know anything about that or not?
Unless they use that as a fund name. For trucks or something.
They, I mean, they get, they, it's not the lid like you guys get, but it's, they get money.
Right, they get, there, there's actually a tax.
Yeah.
That's loaded on the count, on the township, it's not on the town.
Naming it as, I don't know.
Yeah, it could be a fund name, but it may not.
No, it was money written to, this wasn't a fund, it was a check written to.
Yeah, this, these were funded.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Dispersed to Washington Township Fire and EMS.
Yeah, I'd like to visit them one day, maybe we can get a, a visit to their place.
Those, fine.
Okay, let's, um.
I'm fine.
So I'll, I'll put it on the agenda in two weeks.
Yeah.
And, um, and then you will have talked to.
Yeah. Okay.
That's interesting.
I want you guys to feel comfortable, though, that we're gonna support you.
Yeah.
We're not gonna leave you guys out to dry.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
People appreciate that.
Yes, I know. And we appreciate what you guys do, so. I'd just like to get a little more clarity from township on why they don't feel it's appropriate to give their portion of the contract. It should be fair and equitable all the way across the board and not leave you guys out to dry.
Yeah, great.
Okay.
All right, next up, we have a CF one for Ember recreational vehicles. Uh, we granted them a three-year abatement on both real estate and personal property, the real estate one is timed out, personal property, this may be the last time it. The abatement starts when the investment is made, so their investment was made over a couple of years, so, uh, this may be the last one of personal property. So they far exceed what they agreed to, so recommend that we approve it.
Okay. Yeah, they definitely. Estimated one point five million, they paid up almost four. Yeah, okay. So is there a motion to approve the CF one? Uh, when this was personal or real?
Personal.
Personal for Ember RV.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Kathy.
Well, second.
Second by Greg, open for discussion. No further discussion, take a vote. Doug Smith.
Yes.
Dean Renfro.
Yes.
Kathy Burke.
Definitely.
Greg DeHolsky.
Yes.
And Jeff Beechey, the S, motion carries.
Next, we have three SRF pay applications, take these one at a time, number sixteen is twenty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars to JPR for engineering services.
I'll make the motion, we, uh, do a pay application, number sixteen, twenty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars to JP.
Motion by Kathy.
I'll second.
Second by Greg, open for discussion. No further discussion, take a vote. Doug Smith.
Yes.
Dean Renfro.
Yes.
Kathy Burke.
Yes.
Greg DeHolsky.
Yes.
And Jeff Beechey, the S, motion carries.
Next one is number seventeen, and, uh, we'll wanna look at the second page on this, because typically I break out the retainage, this time they didn't.
Looks like it's thirteen.
Retainage amount is thirteen thousand six eighty, and the check to, uh, Phoenix is two hundred and fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. So those are two numbers added together that will be asked for.
Which that would be.
Two fifty, it's to be right, well, that's kind of funky the way they do.
Thirteen six eighty on this pitch.
Two fifty-nine, nine twenty.
That's the check.
Thirteen six eighty.
Yes.
Two hundred and seventy-three thousand six hundred dollars.
Two seventy-three six?
Yep.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve pay application number seventeen?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Doug.
I'll second.
Second by Dean, open for discussion. No further discussion, take a vote. Doug Smith.
Yes.
Dean Renfro.
Yes.
Kathy Burke.
Yes.
Greg DeHolsky.
Yes.
And Jeff Beechey, the S, motion carries.
Third.
Jefferson Tram.
Third pay app is number eighteen, this is twenty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars to JPR for engineering services.
No retainage, right? Correct.
Correct.
I mean, this is who?
This is to JPR.
Yes.
So what's the difference between this JPR and the other one?
Uh, two different invoices, one, one just missed, the first one missed our last.
Our last cycle.
Time, it was just me.
I'll make a motion, we pay, approve pay application number eighteen, the amount of twenty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars to JPR for engineering services.
I'll second.
Motion by Jeff, second by Kathy, open for discussion. No further discussion, take a vote. Doug Smith.
Yes.
Dean Renfro.
Yes.
Kathy Burke.
Yes.
Greg DeHolsky.
Yes.
And Jeff Beechey, the S, motion carries.
Okay, next, uh, this is the year for renewing the contract, uh, for management of the Raver Golf Course, so I included the, uh, contract, I. I changed it, just the dates, that's all, Alex.
Are you sure?
And the signature page, uh, so I'm just alerting you that this is happening, Jeff will be back, I'm going to be with him, uh, next week or the week after. I'm not sure if he's wanting to sign up for another four years, but maybe he is, but this is an opportunity for you guys to take a look at the contract and if you want to make any changes to it. We've got a few months to do that, so.
Okay.
Last time we signed it in October, so it, it ends December thirty-first.
Okay.
So, just alerting.
Let's, think about if we wanna make any additional capital improvements on his, on his half, on his behalf.
Uh, we are looking at, uh, doing some repaving of golf cart lanes this summer.
Okay.
Yeah. We've got fifty thousand budgeted or sixty thousand, something like that.
Okay.
So we're getting, we, we do have a quote now for three, three areas, uh, and Jeff looked at one of those, said that we don't need to do that area, so waiting for him to get back and meet with Eric, and. So we'll be doing some capital.
Okay. What about capital improvements on Jeff's side?
Jeff's side.
Yeah.
I would guess that's not going to happen, like, you can ask.
Well, we had it in there a couple of years ago.
Yeah, that's why I was.
Where he had to do some maintenance of the facility.
Those.
Paint some of the buildings, replace some of the benches.
That happened at that time, that was four years ago when we first did this. So I don't know, yeah, I mean, I'll just go on, take a look around and see what we think.
There was a big thing with the sprinkling system too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was.
That's millions of dollars.
Ten years ago or so, who knows if that.
Yeah, that's, we're, we're talking millions there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, next, I have some project updates, if you scroll down, I, I want to show you what we're looking at on the NIPSCO site, that's coming up next.
Okay.
So this is what we have from NIPSCO, this shows the, uh, this is their nine-month project in town, it shows phases. Right now, we're working on phase one, which is right there on Charles Street. Uh, so that one's correct, and then I learned yesterday that actually phase three that's out here to the west is actually going to be phase two. And so that's the kind of changes we get as this project moves forward. So just thought you'd like to see that chart and the beginning of the, uh. I don't know, chaos, I don't, whatever.
Do, do they have a project manager that can check in like that day, if they're gonna do some hard closures of, like, this school or that way?
We, our department will know. Yes, I've asked for that, so we're supposed to have more than a day's notice, uh, but at least twenty-four hours notice, if they do a hard closure.
Okay.
If they're just restricting traffic, we still want, well, as they get done with this phase, then they'll move to that side of town, so we know that'll be happening, yeah.
And they actually put the new line down, one-twenty west? I. The guy told me the other day, that's what they were doing.
There's a whole bunch of.
They were doing it today, they were doing something today down by, um, like at the end of Illinois Street there, on the other side, the north side of the road. I don't know, I didn't recognize the company.
It's veteran, they're charting everything for NIPSCO.
But they were digging, they were digging today.
They might be the kind of.
But that's.
My whole house was rattling.
They were measuring mantles in front of my house, the depth and everything, it was, they told me they're putting a new gas line down there.
Uh, north side was getting a new gas line, not sure. So the project scope there shows some work on the south side too, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, do you, you don't know what's gonna go on in this?
How are they, are they directionally or are they digging?
He didn't say. This guy, could I ask him something? I all the, the brown, roll, rig and roll here, and he said they're putting new gas line in.
Yeah, by the vibration that they were putting off, I'm thinking they're boring, they're not digging, because I didn't see anything in Williams's front yard that was all built up. But that lasted all afternoon.
Yeah. And what's this, what's this air test?
Uh, once they make all their connections, they.
Oh, okay. Pressure testing, just a pressure test, gotcha, okay.
They use air instead of gas.
Okay.
Less.
Well, it's probably a little less explosive.
Well, let's chance a boom.
So, a couple things were.
Think like that.
You know, they did listen to us, and phase one is important because we need them out of the way when we start our St. Joe and Elkhart Street projects, and that.
Yeah.
So that's.
Can, what's the difference between the, the stripes, the blue circles, the stripes, the brick looking and the pink? Do you have any idea?
The phase numbers.
Well, not particularly phase numbers, but it are, is it all gonna be?
Is there a legend at the bottom?
Yeah.
I mean, that's what I was looking for, but I don't see one.
I don't know.
I mean, each phase is a different.
Yeah, well.
There's a different hash, there's a different color or a different graphic.
So the.
So they got a honeycomb.
Big one, so the, so overall, you're looking at the end dot, uh, scope of work from east to west, north to south, so that's your pink stuff is that, and but I don't know the difference between all the different crosshairs, hatches, whatever.
I thought maybe, you know.
The blue boxes are where Nipso's doing a lot of work, but along main, right out in here, that's a whole new gas line going down through there. On the north side.
Out here?
Yeah.
I guess this is a few different color, so maybe. White, you can tell the difference. Like old drafting, like if you black and white prints, you can tell there's, it's my guess, yeah.
My dad used to do that too.
I'm thinking that's one phase at a time.
So you say the purple is the end dot project?
Uh, everything that you see boxed in, uh.
Squares.
Like along Vasula, up a little bit on the State Road fifteen north, Montville Road, and then south down to the railroad tracks, that's the scope of the end dot project.
Phase one, or all of it?
That's all of Endots, Endots project.
How far are they?
Next year.
So they're not going to treatment plant then?
Well, doesn't, well, I don't know the scale on here, so that's Maple Street, is that out to the treatment?
No, that's church.
That's, that's deep house right there.
That only goes out to.
And it wouldn't even get out to Hillbush.
This one is almost a death house.
No.
Yeah.
I thought they were going all the way.
I thought they were going to the treatment plant.
Uh.
Wait a minute, there's water there, so maybe that is, you see the water on the left hand.
Right, but, but Hillbush.
Maybe that's all the scope of.
There's no Hillbush.
Like no Hillbush, so they're not going as far as Hillbush.
There's Indiana, but no Hillbush.
Yeah.
They're not going to.
Then I go to here, okay, so phase three, phase three is that, no, you were right to begin with, phase three is those pink diagonal lines all the way through there.
And that's.
Phase four is those individual sections, whatever they're doing there. And then phase eight is from stoplight all the way down to the uh.
Okay, so this is an end dot then, this is just Nipso?
Just Nipso.
Okay.
Then the end dot.
Okay. Okay, that makes sense.
Another original blueprints went to the treatment plant.
Yeah, it's phase nine and face and phase five is where we're going to have our toughest traffic issues.
Is that's.
Phase nine is when they wanted to hard close the bridge, and now we're back to not that.
So lane closure?
Just a lane closure.
Okay.
Unless they run into something that nobody has asphalt, they don't even know what's underneath there, except there's a gas line.
We don't even know.
Under the bridge?
Phase is gonna, yeah, do it.
Under Main Street or under the bridge?
Right there, phase nine box.
Okay, they don't know what's in that intersection.
Yeah, in fact, I don't think they know what's out here. There's a gas.
And sewage or sewer pipes.
Well, I mean, they're not the only ones without asphalt, so.
Well, yeah.
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 Okay, so moving on, uh, the next item I have is the Montville Road uh cost share, that's the new fuel station up north, you remember last meeting we talked about? We had agreed the cost share was end dot, the owner up there and the town on the improvements, State Road thirteen in that area. Uh, end up backed out, well, they never agreed, so um, I have the invoice that so these guys spent four hundred and seventy-two thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars for those road improvements up there, and our offer was like to reimburse them a hundred thousand dollars for that, so that would be our share, using those tip monies up there.
So our share is only the forty-something?
Hundred thousand, hundred.
Oh, okay, well, you, I thought you said they spent forty.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, now.
So if you're okay with this, uh, just a motion to approve payment of that and we'll get that check out to them. That was.
That's just from the turn lane there?
Yeah, they got an east cell, what's the, pass and lane and.
They haven't done anything on the west side yet.
Nobody is coming, yeah.
Is that what, I mean, that I see my business, is that what they're paying for is for the east side that they've already done? Or what they're gonna do on the west?
Paying for a portion of the whole project, or, yeah, which encompasses.
Both east and west.
Both east and west side of the road, so the, the, the total cost of that, Danny, was four hundred and seventy-two thousand, we offered to pay a hundred thousand of that. Yeah. Is there a motion to approve a hundred thousand dollar payment?
Sure.
Fuel station passing lanes?
Yes. There is a motion to approve that.
Can we take that a little bit more official, Kathy?
Well, I just needed a little interest, no, um. I make a motion that we approved the hundred thousand dollars allotted at previously approved for the, what is it, gas station area?
Gas station passing lanes.
Yeah, okay, you should have made it, gas station passing lane.
Okay, motion by Kathy, official motion by Kathy, there are second.
I will second.
Okay, an official motion by, official second by Doug, open for discussion. No further discussion, we'll take a vote, Doug Smith.
Yes.
Dean Renfro.
Yes.
Kathy Burke.
Yes.
Greg DeHolsky.
Yes.
And Jeff P T Z S, motion carries.
I have to, I have to say, I'm sorry, I had three hours of sleep last night, I'm a little dandy.
Okay.
All right, a couple of quick updates, our development standards, I understand that, that following our last work sessions, we made some changes, improvements, I thought I was going to see a copy this week. Not sure I am, but maybe it'll show up tomorrow, we may be ready for the work session to take a look at that, we, I hope we do our anyway, so we're out, we are making progress there. The request for proposals for our vacant block down here, I, that is stalled right now, we're waiting on some legal stuff and however, uh, I should have, I hope to have a template of what that might look like for you to look at. Maybe by the work session this month, yeah, so at least we'll be able to see what a template looks like and give us an idea, we're not quite ready to go with it yet.
Okay.
So making some progress, a lot slower than I imagined, if you recall, we're doing a water shed, shed study on the south, uh, south of town. Uh, that is coming close to being wrapped up to, I don't know if we'll look at that in April or May work session. I never would have guessed this, Ken Jones was surprised by this, but what we found is there's actually two water sheds down there. I don't know how that can happen, because all that water goes to Saint Joe River, but there are two water sheds down there, which complicates it, because we can't take water from one watershed and move it through another watershed to get to the Saint Joe River or something like that. I reminded Ken that in central Indiana, they're taking seven billion, billion gallons or whatever water from one watershed in Lafayette, moving it to a Boone County for, I said that's a few billion gallons every week or something, that's the uh, that's the name of that development.
No, I knew you were gonna ask me that.
I, I, I used to know it.
Yeah.
So, Indiana Economic Development Corporation bought up a lot of land in Boone, Boone County, I think.
That's right, yeah. How far away is it?
It's a lot of miles.
From Lafayette?
So, then they found out they don't have enough groundwater in Boone County to support the development, so they wanted to build a pipeline over to West Lafayette, off the other from there. That is not gonna happen, I can't imagine anybody agreeing to that, but.
That's crazy.
It's like the brido, it's like you're building a lot of ponds and.
But one of the big issues is, what happens if you move that amount of water from one water, groundwater, one watershed to another watershed? What happens?
I wouldn't wanna guess.
You dry one, flood the other.
I don't know, uh, anyways, uh, we'll, we'll see what the water shed study shows, but obviously we've got development happening down this, it's really a nice proactive thing to do and hopefully county participate.
Okay.
With some solution, uh, let's see, there was, it's like another project, but um.
Street light.
Yeah, I know, the street light, so there's a little story here, and I think you'll appreciate this, uh. If you remember, last fall, we were under pressure, we were trying to get this water main in, so we'd be done, so Endot could get the mirrors and then Endot delayed, but nonetheless, we were under uh, some times constraint to get this, this water main in and get that asphalt, we were running out of weather. And so as we tore stuff up, obviously we cut conduit and put everything back together and turned, flipped the switch, series of street lights didn't work. So Niplock did some troubleshooting, couldn't find where the short was at, it's under asphalt now, and our guys took a look at it for a couple of days. They tried doing some, not quite code wiring, and that didn't work. So they said, well, we're just gonna have to have dark street lights, and I said, no, that's not going to work, we can't have that amount of street lights, not lit for the next two years. It's like, we have Christmas coming, we have Christmas decorations, I said, even if you have to buy two hundred feet of extension or cords, get them lit, and so a week goes by or so and Eric comes in, so this is Eric, John and Wendell. Figure it out, Eric comes in, says, we got them worked, I said, great, how'd you do it? He said, are you sure you wanna know?
Turned the switch.
And at that point, I remembered a, a wise attorney at the county commissioner, when I was county commissioner, said, Mike, don't ask a question for which you don't wanna know against.
Right.
I said, no, it's okay, the Christmas light's gonna work, he said, yep, it worked beautiful. Jill and I were sitting in a meeting up here this week with our Endot folks and all the utility folks, talking about moving utilities, the Nipso and Comcast and frontier. Towards the end of the meeting, the Comcast person, uh, they have to move some of their aerial lines, and she said, we noticed that somebody has zip tied some extension cords to our Comcast cable and they're plugged in. And you can see it right up here.
Yeah, I noticed.
It worked. It worked, so uh, we're gonna take those down, that means for a period of time, uh, we're gonna have some street lights that aren't going to work in this section. Uh, there's some holes and stuff to be removed.
Yeah.
So I told Eric, I said, we, we can't go a year without street lights, we need to come up with a solution.
A viable solution.
Was.
Yeah, okay.
But there, there will be a time when there won't be street lights in here, so they're moving, Nipso's got one pole moved in this area, frontier for Comcast, had a couple of poles and even moved. Once all that gets done, Comcast is talking about doing some underground work, and wouldn't it be nice if they decided to bury these lines out here?
Yeah.
Above them here, and of course, they do that, and got nothing to hang our extension cords. Anyways, I thought you'd appreciate that story and uh that's it, oh, one other uh piece of good news, I, this is the other project on Elkhart and Saint Joe Street, I understand we're putting new water mains in there. Uh, it looks like we are going to be able to use S R F funding for that, we will have surplus funds in the water project, so that will be covered under that loan.
Good.
But.
Always but.
We uh, we have to front the money for that, and so we will not be reimbursed until water project is done, which will be late next year. So it'll be tight, uh, depends on what the, this will be a change order for Niplock, so I'm waiting to see what Niplock's the original engineering estimate was one million dollars, turns out that includes some asphalt paving and things that we're not going to do, the water spain portion itself is supposed to be seven hundred thousand. So we can do it, uh, it'll, it'll be tight for us till we get those monies reimbursed next year.
Can we do a short-term interlocal using major moves monies with the county?
County has said that they are no longer loaning monies out of that, but they need it all. So um short of uh skipping a payment, that'd be four hundred thousand. I think we'll be okay, we'll, well, I know, I know we'll be okay, it's just that I ain't gonna run it closer than what I'd like.
Well, it's worth, it's worth an ask, isn't it?
Yeah.
Because I thought that, I thought the whole idea behind the major moves was that that would, that money, that that fund would continue to grow.
It has.
And and then, and that fund was set up for all of the cities and towns that were impacted by the.
No, it was set up just for the cap. They just. The loans.
Okay.
So each of us, uh, you guys got a distribution for major.
Okay.
Small amount.
Okay.
So anyways, we'll get that uh done, we will be reimbursed, so send out a pocket for us uh, for two long.
Okay.
That was good, that's it.
Okay.
What?
Any questions for link?
Oh, yes, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Wait a minute. Remember I talked about uh renting a little bit of space over here by the community department, get that deal done, there is, they're just using the paid portion. And we're getting a hundred bucks a month for the uh.
Yeah.
So Kathy, I wanna make sure that I told you that I signed the temporary.
That's not what it was, I wanted to document it for the minutes, but the hundred dollars was going to the park department.
Well, that's pretty good, that's big of Nipso.
And, and uh, and I reviewed this lease agreement, not an attorney, because at a hundred bucks a month, I, I blow through three months at least. And Kathy, you noticed that it's the city of Bristol instead of the town of Bristol, that's the only mistake I made on the whole thing, otherwise.
Okay.
Good, if you guys are okay with that going to the market, that's.
And we have an injection to that, in his legal, in legalese. Okay, thank you.
Eric, don't let Alex.
Anybody have anything, anybody have anything for Mike? Okay, uh, Kathy, you know everything, Alex, what do you have for us tonight?
Hey Jeff, um, this evening I have uh for the council ordinance number twenty-two-five dash zero-four dash seventeen dash oh-eight. Uh, this is an ordinance of the town council, um, the many chapters fifty-one and fifty-two of code ordinances relating to water and sewer utility rates. Um, so we'll recall the discussion from, I believe, the, the council's last regular session uh, with regards to the start date for um, the increase in water and sewer rates uh, based upon the ordinance, the rate ordinance that was adopted about this time last year, um, there was some concern about um, those rates going into effect in May, uh, it's currently scheduled under the ordinance, uh, and there was an effort to or a, a hope to delay that start uh through really the end of the summer, so August one. Um, there's also discussion with regards to the system development charges for water and sewer, um, in particular uh, reducing that amount uh both for, both for water and sewer, um, to rates that are call it a little more manageable, I think for the average user, um, so the ordinance before you addresses those issues. So with the proposal here is uh for water and sewer charges, that automatic increase in rates would be delayed from May one to August one of this year. Um, there is a, a downward reduction in the system development charges for uh water to uh eight hundred and ten dollars for three and a half inches, three-quarter inch and one-inch connections. Uh, and then on the uh sewer development charge, uh, the three-quarter inch and one-inch connections would be a twenty-one twenty-one hundred and some change uh for a, a, a charge. This also clarifies that there remains the meter deposit, so you, uh, users who connect to the utility uh would make a hundred dollar deposit uh, as part of that connection, uh, clarifies that uh, the users on the north side of Vasula Street between Division and Montville uh, would, uh, would be required to pay for the extension of the water mains from the north side of their building to the, to the curb line. And then, I believe that's, I believe that's about all that we've addressed. Um, oh, and clarifying too, that um, the water system development charge is applicable just to potable water connections and not the fire service connections, so the that wouldn't be applicable for a sprinkler connection.
Okay.
So um, that's the ordinance that's before you, uh, we've looked at the issue of the, the rate issue with Baker Tilly is, is to how the system development charges were set, um, how these, you know, the date of the uh onset of the increase in rates were set, um. I think the, the best information that we're operating with at this point is that that's not going to run afoul of uh, of the S R F requirements. Baker Tilly, uh, Mike correct me if I'm wrong here, but Baker Tilly is, is running those numbers and um, we'll, we'll probably have those available in May, I believe, is the hope, um, so to the extent that to the extent that this is adopted and there is an issue, um, I would expect that we could rectify it in relatively short order. Uh, so I don't anticipate that there would be of, an issue there, I don't think this, this delay in rates from uh, from May to August one would create an issue where a, a payment would be missed, or a, the debt service fund wouldn't be appropriately funded, et cetera, I, I don't I don't believe that it creates that type of issue, so um that's the long and short of it, um, I'll offer that the, probably the biggest caveat here from a timing standpoint uh, in order for the, in order for the rates to be adopted, there has to be a public hearing, there has to be a notice that's provided, so that that the monasteries have the opportunity to um, to discuss the rates, certainly this is a, a delay in an increase in rates and a decrease in reduction, so I wouldn't anticipate that there would be um, consternation among the uh, utility users for those um, decreases. Uh, however, because there is a, a ten-day period when, between when the public hearing can be had. Uh, however, because there is a, a ten day period when, between when the public hearing can be had and um. When the notice has to be published, it has to be published no later than this upcoming Monday. Even if I get the notice to the newspaper first thing tomorrow morning, I don't know if they're gonna hit that in time. So your worst case scenario from timing would be uh, that the public hearing would be held May one for adoption, May one. The same day that that rate increase would be scheduled to occur. We could always make a, a slight amendment to the ordinance itself so that there isn't. There's no issue with the revision occurring on the same date from the, the rate would otherwise increase. So.
Okay.
Just to tell you that that's, the push would be to have that hearing April seventeenth at the next regular town council meeting.
Sure.
To the extent that, that we can't get proper notice in time, May one will be that date.
Okay.
So. Um, other than that, uh, my recommendation would be to uh, advance this ordinance to second reading.
Okay.
Can I ask a question in regard to exhibit C?
Sure.
So that talks about meter deposits.
Yes.
And it sounds to me in the reading of this that there's some additional work that's being put on to the town administrative staff. And I want to make sure I'm reading it correctly. So.
Language didn't change. So now the question is, should we be doing something or not?
Yeah. Okay, here's my, here's my question. First of all, the, it reads that. The responsible party for payment for the water bill. Does that include renters? Cause currently we do not charge our renters a meter deposit and I feel that we should. Because the landlord is not responsible for making those payments and a lot of times we end up writing that off. So I want to clarify that.
So the, the question is, should the meter deposit charge go to a, a tenant instead of a renter? I, I think.
In addition to.
Um. In addition to, I don't.
I mean, in addition to a homeowner.
Oh.
Should it, should a renter be. Charged a meter deposit?
What's the meter deposit for?
To cover for when they leave and they don't pay their bill.
Bill.
Sometimes somebody will move and they don't realize they have a final bill. So we apply that meter deposit. To their bill and it either covers the whole thing and we send them the difference or it doesn't.
Isn't the meter deposit for when the meter's installed on a new line?
I can only tell you how we handle it currently, not how it was set up to be.
Because if, if the meter deposit was designed so that.
A hundred dollars will not cover a new meter. I can tell you that.
So when, when John Doe comes in and builds a new house. Connects to the water line, connects to their, to our water service, we have to put a new meter in there. That deposit, I guess in my mind would be that hundred dollar deposit is for the meter when it's installed.
This says the meter deposit shall be due from and charged to the party. Who shall be responsible for the payment of the water bill.
Okay.
So that's what this says.
But I mean, this is when the water's turned on, not when the meter's installed. Isn't the service connection fee take care of the charge of the meter?
I think so.
This is just when the water's turned off or turned on.
That's correct. This applies to the usage of the system, not necessarily the connection to the system. I think that would be correct. And this is sort of, there hasn't been a system development charge to address the, the connection.
So that we do, every, every time a renter comes in, there's a, there's a hundred dollar meter charge, a meter deposit?
I think there should be. There is not currently.
It also says in the event the water service is disconnected for non-payment of the water bill. But therefore substant- subsequently reconnected for the same customer. See, that's the problem. You got same customer.
Well, same customer. So in, that goes to another point. So it's saying, if you don't pay your bill. I'm supposed to take the meter deposit, apply it to the bill, then you come in and pay that and give me another meter deposit.
Yeah.
That's a lot of extra work.
That is.
People, if they, if they get disconnected, they come in, they pay their bill. There, it's a non-issue as far as utilizing that meter deposit.
Right.
Okay.
It is a, it's, I mean, it's no different than a security deposit um, on a lease.
Yeah.
Um, okay.
It is, it is, it's designed for that exact scenario where a user, a user comes in, runs behind on a bill and so the town. Already has a tab that it can run to cover its costs.
Yeah, okay.
And then to the extent that, that someone were to come in, um, and say, you know, I've been turned off. Um, let's say it was a hundred dollar back pay and the, the, the um. Uh, the meter deposit covered that and he come in and say, I'd rather have my water turned back on. Okay, well, that'll be, we need a hundred bucks upfront. And then if they, they relieve that tendency or they relieve the scenario where they're no longer a user. Then they'd be refunded a hundred dollars.
So in essence, the hundred dollar deposit, meter deposit is really just, it's not, it's not a deposit for the use of meter.
Poor wording.
Yeah. It is a hundred dollar security deposit.
Effectively.
Should they not pay their water bill?
Mm-hmm.
And in that case, yes, then renter should have a hundred dollar deposit.
Can we amend that wording?
I think if you read the first two sentences, it says that.
That's why I always.
The bill's put into the renter's name, they're the ones totally responsible for the bill and that's what that states. That's who should be paying the deposit.
I, I understand. I'm just clarifying because that's not what we've been doing.
But that's not.
This is different verbiage in our whole.
Yeah, but this is not what, though I just read what that said and this says the same customer. It does not say.
That's if they get shut off.
If they get disconnected.
Hundred dollars.
Right, but.
Come back to turn it back on.
Right, but it doesn't say like if you are a different runner.
No, well.
Same customer.
So in, in that scenario, and again, you get into, you get into some contractual rights between landowner and tenant, but if the. If there's a tenancy scenario where the landowner, uh, where the tenant has agreed to take on payment of the water bill. Then uh, at the beginning of that tenancy, the tenant come to the town, make the deposit. Pay for its usage and then the tenancy ends, the tenant leaves, that money is refunded. And then there would be nothing on the account for that property.
Right.
Till a new tenant came in or until the property owner began using it in their own right and would make the hundred dollar.
I agree.
Okay.
So.
That's a nice idea.
Um. From a, to your question Kathy, uh, where would you want the language to change?
Sure.
You don't, cause it, it probably, it, the, this, this addresses that scenario where you have a. Where you do have a tenant, a user doesn't have a property interest of a fee simple ownership interest.
I think that wording ex- expresses exactly that because it says. The um, the party who's responsible for the payment. So that could be a homeowner or a tenant. That works fine. The next section I think needs to be changed because I don't want to have to use that meter deposit. To pay a bill when they're gonna come in to pay that bill and then have them come in and make another hundred dollar payment.
Are you talking about?
That's like chasing your tail.
Are you talking about the same on?
The disconnect, the next section.
So then how long, so then do we, do we extend the time on the delinquency of a. Bill before we pull the hundred dollar deposit to pay?
We only use the hundred dollars when they move. We don't use that to pay a delinquent bill.
So then.
If the tenant would leave, yeah. If they had a balance, we would apply it to the bill. If they moved, we would try to contact them to reimburse them, so to speak.
So then if we don't use the hundred dollar deposit to pay the bill.
They pay the bill.
Right, then we're not, you don't have to go back and replenish it.
That's, that's extra work for us.
But I, but I don't, if you're not using the hundred dollar deposit to pay the bill.
This is a shut off, so they don't pay their bill, we shut the water off. Then they come in, pay their bill, we turn the water on.
And charge fees for that.
This makes a bunch of work. Like, we have to use the hundred dollars to pay the bill, then they have to pay another forty dollars to us, whatever else is due.
That hundred dollars should just come in and sit there on the account period.
For the meters, till they move or.
I'll leave the language and don't worry about it. They're in here in the next ten, fifteen minutes.
Well, yeah, it's been that, it's been that way since it was passed and you basically ignored it.
It's that.
It doesn't mean we should have corrected.
I'm sorry, I had to read closely.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a. Um, yeah, again, not being at the, at the counter when a, when a customer would, would come in with this particular issue. From a thirty thousand foot perspective, it, uh, part of this makes sense that someone would come in, you'd clear the account and then start a new one effectively is what this would. Would contemplate. Yeah, that adds that extra step. It's an additional work. I'm trying to think of, if you're trying to keep a hundred dollar balance in that security for the period of, of whenever a user is using it. Um, yeah, I mean, maybe that's the language, um, that every user shall have a hundred dollar account and ensure that that hundred dollars is. Is there, um, you know, in that way, if somebody comes in. The, the, the administrative job would be just to take whatever additional monies would be needed to hit that hundred dollar threshold. That makes sense?
No.
Subtract that hundred dollars from. Why don't you subtract the hundred dollars from the last bill? Is what you're saying?
Yeah, so last bill is, the, let's say the last bill's um, ninety bucks, right? Ninety dollars unpaid, uh, the water shut off. There's a hundred dollars that's on the security deposit. The town applies ninety of the deposit to the bill. It's now at zero, right? And there's ten dollars left in that person's account. The way the ordinance is currently written, what then happens is that ten dollars gets sent, sent back to the customer. And the customer pays another hundred dollars and the water is turned off. That's the way this is currently written.
Or can we just leave the language there in case you ever needed use it, you have that leverage?
Well, what are the turn on and shut off charges?
We charge sixty dollars for the guys who are out there and shut it off.
Or turn it on.
No, it's a, just a, yeah, it's not a disconnect fee. It's just a turn on fee. Or a reconnect fee.
Section B says that, that's separate from the meter deposit.
Kathy, most people are in within.
I, I don't disagree. I just don't want to be moving money around with them. We don't have to.
I don't blame you. I don't, I don't blame you. That's, it creates a bigger mess than it is.
Leverage if we need it.
So you're saying need it as it is?
Yeah, I do.
And then do what you want.
Then we're not following the rules.
That's right.
Um. How many, how many disconnects do we have right now? Is it, is it frequent? Do we have very many?
We send out probably. An average of forty letters a month.
But we don't shut.
No, we, we might have one to three that we actually shut off. If that.
Yeah.
Nobody wants to have their water shut off.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know. Let's go bathe in the river. It's good to get dunked.
In the same show?
Sure, why not?
Add to?
So I don't want to hold up your timetable and we can address it later if we need to. I don't know what works better for you guys, but I wanted to. Bring it to the forefront.
Not sure. Best way to accomplish it was, do you like to say, maybe to add a, you know. I don't know, you know, in a discretion of the clerk, the amount is. If they will.
There you go.
Um. But then you get, you know, but then you're in a scenario where, you know, as, at your discretion, could be some folks that don't have a hundred dollars for your deposit, some people have a hundred dollars for your deposit.
Yeah.
I know. Well, what's not in here is the sixty dollars we're charging to turn the service on.
Yeah, that's correct.
That's right.
Why don't we take out those last sentences and just say. If it's subsequently reconnected, it's a sixty dollar charge. If it's sus- subsequently, the bill is paid, brought up to date, there will be a sixty dollar charge.
So that's in a different section as.
Yeah.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
But instead of meter deposit, can we say meter, meter security deposit or?
Let, let's run it through chat.
Wow, gee, don't do that.
Yeah, so maybe is that?
Or utility security deposit?
Is that being where the, where clarity would be added, meter deposit is kind of a misnomer as far as what people expect from it?
Yeah, potentially.
I think so.
Call it a water usage deposit.
Okay.
Um, arose by any other name, so.
Yes.
Okay, no, I, I, that, we can, um, if you'd like, I can, I can make that kind of change. And we can introduce it in an amendment to the ordinance of the next.
At the second, at the second and final. Okay. All right, so.
This was the second.
No, this is just advanced to second, advanced.
Oh, advanced to second.
Advanced on first, the second reading.
I'm sorry, I missed.
Okay, so that said, if we can, if we can.
Can we advance this to first reading to second reading? Twenty twenty-five oh four seventeen oh eight. I'm sorry, I said three hours of sleep last night.
Okay, motion by Kathy. Is there a second? I'll second. Second by Doug, open for discussion. No further discussion like about Doug DeSmith?
Yes.
Dean Radfro.
Yes.
Kathy Berg?
Yes.
Greg DeHolsky?
Yes.
And Jeff Beechey, yes, motion carries.
So. We have resident, new residential being constructed now and, and maybe some new commercial. How do I charge them? How do we charge them in this interim?
Uh, well, I think the, uh, the ordinance as it stands is what's in effect. Until.
But I don't want to do that. Nobody wants to do that. So how do we do it?
Or your, those rates were so high and have, have risen.
And higher.
Well, uh, I mean, let me.
I mean, i- is there?
I couldn't even say the G.
Yeah.
Is there a way to tiptoe?
Yeah. Um.
It's saying twenty-four.
You know, we're going to adopt the new rate. And so a person that just happens to have their house ready to be connected now.
That's correct. So.
We're okay unless it ends up being.
I'll tell you.
May first, it's four weeks.
So.
So we may end up May first.
Wasn't there something that you were gonna talk to Baker Tilly about because there was a high number, what is it, seventy thousand, something in there?
Let's, let's let Alex follow through with what he was gonna say. I think I might answer.
Sorry.
I might answer these questions.
So, so Doug makes, Doug makes a good point. Um, and I would, I would tell you that I did this deliberately, but I think that there is. There may well be a, uh, flaws that I didn't delete. Now, take a look at exhibit G. With regards to the sewer system development charge being effective as of May one, twenty twenty-four. So this gets into that question that the council had with regards to the retroactivity of a, of an amendment here. Um, particularly with the, the two or three users that had um, connected.
Prior to.
Prior to this amendment and under the, uh, we'll call them the expanded rates. Um. I, I mean, as a matter of course, uh, the council has the authority to retroactively apply. Rates, uh, that's, you, you have that within your authority, obviously. With some constraints, but um. In the, uh, in the circumstance here, especially since we're talking about the, the development charge. Um, it's only been collected a handful of times. If this were an everyday occurrence. From a practical standpoint, retroactivity might not make any sense and you could, you may really run into a circumstance where you upset SRF. If that were the case, um. Because this has been so limited, um, retroactively applying these rates, that may well address the question. Um, still probably doesn't.
If we can get this done. In two weeks, the next meeting on the seventeenth, I think will be fun.
Okay.
And I think we're just looking at one resident right now that's about ready to connect.
It also from, from a. Billing standpoint, when is the town bill that resident only connection?
They write the check to get the permit. Don't they? Don't they? Service connection fee.
They do write a check, but I'm not sure what the question is.
When do they pay the service development charge? It's right to get the permit to connect, isn't it?
Mm-hmm, same time.
So you can't invoice them May second.
Okay, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
We'll uh, just, have everybody hold off just as much as they can and if not. We'll figure it out.
Okay.
That's what we got there.
Yes, now to the Baker Tilly question, they are completing a, that rate study or, and. They're not quite, they won't quite be ready by the fifteenth or seventeenth. So I said, that's okay. That's the reason we pushed it off to August first. So hopefully in May, we'll be able to take a look at this entire structure. We may not be able to, we may need to do something August first. We may need to do something July one, but maybe it doesn't have to be as high. Or maybe we don't have to do anything.
Yeah, cause that was, that was quite high on their guestimate, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Okay.
Two questions probably. On a sewer. On the sewer. System development charge. You know, when it was almost three grand there. Says a three quarters meter, now that's the water meter?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure, cause I knew we didn't have sewer meter in our house. What's, where, where's the sewer meter command? Okay, it's the water.
Oh.
Oh, that one says sewer, but the other part says water. Exhibit F says water. It's the one you wanted.
The meter size for the water.
Right. But, you know, to, to look at it just as a label, it's like. You have three quarters sewer meter.
I thought I fixed that. Alex must have changed something.
Which. You have to really hide it to order it that big.
I just didn't take care.
Let me take care.
Yeah, we, we do have a couple businesses that have sewer meters.
Is that?
Mm-hmm, there's a, a water meter and a sewer meter.
I didn't, I didn't know that.
Hey, anything else on this one? Okay. Anything else from Alex?
Uh, nothing from me.
Okay. All right, we are now at item number nine. Privilege of the floor, otherwise known as public comment. Anybody in the room this evening would like to make public comment? If so, please step up to the microphone.
And now you guys know that I'm Lester Otto, I live at, oh, one eight six eight six, category twenty-three.
Good evening, water company.
All right. Uh, this past weekend. We had a storm come through. And. My power went out at five o'clock P M. It has not been turned on yet. All of Bristol, according to the Nipso's website. Is cleared out, cleaned up. Hooked up. But my power is still off. Now. I find that strange.
Yeah.
And. It's a little cold.
Yeah, yeah.
No heat. No water, you don't realize how, what your, uh. The problems that you have when you don't have a power.
Right.
I mean, just to wash your hands, you've gotta go boil some water or use ice cold water. And if you notice, I haven't shaved in a while and I'm not gonna shave until I have hot waters. And it's too. But, uh. I'd like to have my water turned on or my power turned on, so that I have, have. Now, I know there's people that are much worse shape than I am. I do not have any power lines down, but I don't know why my power is off. I don't have any idea. I've looked at the pole, it looks like the fuse up there is still plugged in. I don't know why, what's going on. Uh, but my security light that I take Nipso for doesn't work. So. That's, that's an issue. And, you know, I, I really don't wanna complain because Nipso's got their. They're up to their. Yeah. Backside now. Okay?
Have you not reported routeage for Nipso yet?
A minimum of six times.
Is that right?
But, how about your neighbors?
Everyone around me had power, except for the house across the street that Nip, uh, Valmont, Valmont from the Amish guy, that's, it's empty. It's, you don't have any power there. Uh, but everybody else around me had power.
There's gotta be a breaker somewhere.
Yeah, like. Transformer.
A line fuse or a breaker somewhere that's tripped.
Yeah, but I haven't even had anybody come out and take a look at it. They, they can't come, they, they, they ignored it.
What is Nipso telling you when you speak to somebody?
Well, we'll write up another report. And they can't tell me when they're gonna come, when they're gonna take care of anything. But, and. That, that's annoying.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, Sherry and I have been getting by. We have wonderful friends in this neighborhood since we moved to this town. We have wonderful, maybe wonderful friends. And if we have any issues at all. They jump right in and help us take care of things. Uh, we, we go to the neighbors, get a shower, we go to the other neighbors to get water, to flush the toilets. You know, we, we've got wonderful people. I love this town. They're great people. And they'll help you any way they can. And I want you guys to know what kind of people you have in this community. And, uh, I just wanna. I, yeah, I'm frustrated, but I'm also so blessed, yeah.
So it looks like Lester's house is still. Still stating it's, um, off and crew assigned. But.
You said, did you say since Sunday or the, or yesterday?
But there's federal in that area.
I know, I know our lights in town here flickered on and off and that was it.
Yeah. Um.
Cat, they flipped.
No, and four.
Sunday too, but.
We're out of power for two days.
Yeah.
They got connected. But, and there's their, their, um, markers are still there. But. I haven't. Got anybody to even look at anything out of our place.
You know what we used to do, that, where I live, there's just four houses on one grid. The town would all come on except our little grid.
Right.
They'd forget about it. My. Luckily thing was at the time, a daycare next door. Why you have to mention? I've got a daycare next door. First one on every time now. Because that's a necessity, you know? And I, I mean, I'm not saying anything, but I mean, yeah, it's frustrating. I wish I, there was something I could tell you to help you with.
I, uh, reported. That. You know, I have a heart issue. I have a pacemaker. I have to have a, a pacemaker monitor. And it hasn't reported, it ha- hasn't reported to the mothership. For four days.
Did you mention that to them when you called?
Yes, and they says that doesn't matter. It, it only matters who has the worst situation.
Tell them it's a medical emergency.
I didn't.
Really make it bad.
And.
That's, I, I don't, yeah, that's.
And I, I don't, I don't expect you guys to do anything or have any, any pull on Nipso. But. You've got some great people in this town and I wanna let you guys know.
Well, thank you.
Our street department can run an extension board.
Thanks for leaving the thing.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, you probably didn't even hear that.
Okay. Anybody else?
Two here, the ones up here. Are we having that one since?
Like. Do you have these with Nipso this week? Or anytime this weekend? Can you? Ping them and see if they can, huh?
I'll go to their public relations.
Okay.
Here's what I learned about Nipso. The gas guys have no idea what the electric guys.
Yeah.
Electric guys on that big project have no idea what the electric guys on these other projects are doing.
And the finance guys at Nipso don't care about anything.
No.
Well, except.
Except getting your money. Yeah. Yeah.
I'll reach out to the, um. Yeah, I forget what her name is, but.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll see if he can help you out, Lester.
I mean, I can't make it.
It'd be wonderful if I went home tonight and, and the power would be on.
Yeah. Yeah, but, uh.
If it is, let me know. Please, yeah.
Okay.
Cause I'll get, I'll get.
Okay.
It's on fifteen.
Okay.
See if you can use anything.
Yeah.
Do you have a generator for your refrigerators and stuff?
I do have a small generator, I can run my refrigerator and my freezers. And, uh. Right now I'm running a battery charger for my Amish lights that have the Milwaukee hookup and Milwaukee battery. Are you br-? I'm blessed, I'm blessed.
You're, you're starting anyway, you might just, just go pull on it. I mean, it's still off.
Main breaker, your main breaker in your house and your basement? Oh, I've checked all that, I'll hook them off and on back and home, and those are all, n- none of them are tripped.
Well, if you need another generator, I've got one you can use. All right, absolutely, just tell me, I'll bring it up to you.
Thank you.
Yep, I know right where we are. It's sitting in my garage, just doing nothing.
Send Nipso the bill for the gas.
Oh, that'll be. Yeah.
Oh, wouldn't that be fun to do?
Um, not that, the town council items. Doug, anything tonight?
No.
Dean?
No, sir.
Kathy?
Yes, I got a question for Nick. Um, you know, the sirens went off yesterday. I know we have a siren on that end of town, we have one on this end of town. I had no television, nothing going on in my house and I don't hear this tornado sirens. In the middle of town, you don't hear them.
Well, you're.
I heard you both last night.
Remember, three hours of sleep, Nick.
You, you did hear him?
I heard him.
Okay.
But my question is, it used to be that when we had a tornado warning. That the fire department siren went off. That was before we had the other ones. It's broken?
That's the reason it's been supplied.
It's been supplied again.